Good afternoon, everyone. It is a little after four. We're going to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for the Cincinnati Public School Board for the 2nd of November, 2022. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Thanks, everybody, for being here today. We have a number of things for discussion. I'm going to start with Item B, which is just a reminder of our three-month board priorities. People who have watched these meetings hopefully remember that really since January, our board has decided in advance, here's where we most need to have some focus and attention over a three-month time period or so. So back in August, we voted on these five being the most important areas where we needed to focus over these three months this fall. Those include making next steps on governance, getting clear on a process for strategic planning, seeing some real improvement on transportation, supporting the passage of our renewal levy, and then continuing to strengthen relationships both with the community members and with parents. So hopefully, you should see several of those reflected in our time this afternoon. And I would just point people, if you haven't looked at it recently, on the second page of the agenda, it gets more specific about what specifically we want to see by the 8th of November. And I mention that because it's next week. So we will, at the first meeting after the 8th, we will update each other and the public on whether or not we landed where we wanted to land on these five. But I think we are well, well on our way, and I think could win on either all or almost all of those five. So this afternoon, moving to Item C, we have several presentations and discussions. The first is going to be next steps with our governance coaching. And I think we have Cindy with us on Blue Jeans. Rob, is she here?
Here.
All right. So Cindy, welcome. And we're going to turn the floor over to you.
Great. Thank you. It's good to see you all today. We are going to talk about the board's self-evaluation. It's been a little bit since you all completed the self-evaluation tool using the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Manual. Does everyone have access to their governance manual and to their self-evaluation that they filled out previously?
Cindy, I have some hard copies here for anybody who wants one. I don't, I think everybody has their own self-eval. But if anybody needs a hard copy, I have one.
Yeah, we need a hard copy.
So while you're busy getting those passed out, I just want to talk a little bit about the purpose of self-evaluation and what this is about. First, it's a systematic method of self-monitoring, and it helps the board stay on track with its commitment to becoming more intensely student outcomes-focused. And then you're using the SOFG framework, the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Framework. And what we're doing today is calculating a baseline score. So you all have completed this individually. Now, we're going to come to agreement on a baseline score and then a projection for where you think you could be in the next three months. And then, this is a valuable thing to do for a number of reasons. First, because the board exists to represent the vision and values of the community and its promise to improve outcomes for students. And we're knowing that student outcomes is the sole reason for the existence of a school system. That the framework itself will help, it's designed to drive the board's ability to function in the most effective manner to achieve that promise, to deliver on that promise for improving student outcomes. And then, as you continue to do this, like I said, you're going to set a baseline, and then every quarter, we'll want you to go through this process again. So it's a matter of calibrating and recalibrating in order to be as intensely student outcomes-focused as the board wishes to be. And what I want to remind everyone is that the self-evaluation isn't about, it's not about blaming, or I don't want you to worry about the score, your baseline score. It's typical that it's going to be low. This is about continuous improvement, having real data as far as where you're starting so that you can implement the behaviors and the items within the framework to become more student outcomes-focused. Are there any questions about that before I continue?
Any questions from board members? Cindy, no questions here.
Okay. Just a quick question. As you look through the board manual and the scoring rubric, which is pages two through seven, and when you look at that Mastering Student Outcomes Focus, you'll note that in that far-right column, the blue column, that is the highest score that can be achieved on each of those pages. I want you to take a moment and notice the difference in the highest score on each of the six domains. And then, does anyone have an idea, who has an idea of why they are scored differently? Why some of those pages have, and those domains have, a higher score value than others? Anyone?
Cindy, can you just say the question one more time?
Sure. So when you look at the scores on the rubric, in that far-right column under Mastering Student Outcomes Focus, if you look at Vision and Goals, the highest score that can be achieved is 35. Values and Guardrails, 15. Mastering Student Outcomes Focus for Monitoring and Accountability is 30. And then for the next three, Communication and Collaboration is 10. Unity and Trust is 5, and Continuous Improvement is 5. So my question is, why does anybody have an idea as to why those are scored differently? Or even stated differently, why are the first three domains the highest?
Got it. So why are the first three domains worth more points than the other ones at the end of the rubric?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky has the answer. He has all the answers.
You know.
Okay. Mr. Morosky.
Good student. You know, I'm assuming, I mean, the first one, of course, you know, Vision and Goals are essentially, you know, the goals, guardrails, et cetera, for us to govern the district and to create an environment where students can achieve and they're, you know, higher level, more related to us than maybe some of the other ones. I don't know.
Yep.
I've been spending our time on our vision and goals, and like, if we don't have goals for the district as a board, then what are we doing?
Yeah. Yeah. That, setting goals and doing so collaboratively with the superintendent are the highest board behavior that is, I most highly correlated with improving student outcomes. So definitely, if you don't have goals, then if a board doesn't have goals for the district, then what, like you said, Mr. Morosky, what are we doing?
And then Cindy, I think Mr. Craig had a thought, and Vice President Jones might have had a thought, too. I couldn't tell. Definitely Mr. Craig.
I'll rely on you to call on people, Ben, because I can't totally see.
So Cindy, I was just going to say, and I think you actually started to say it anyway, but that the first three are really centered around our work towards students. The remaining ones are more of our work with each other. And so where our focus should be is around improving the outcomes, our work that improves the outcomes for the students. And so that would be why I would envision that they would have more of the emphasis in how we would evaluate ourselves as well.
Yeah. So those first three are around ensuring that the focus on students. And while the others are around how the board interacts with itself in the community. Did I reiterate that accurately?
Yes. And then I think Eve had a thought, too, or Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, this is helpful. I appreciate it. I'm, well, I spend a lot of time being confused, but on the first one sheet, you know, I understand the vision, the goals piece, but it seems like the values and constraints seem low. Am I reading that wrong? I mean, the first page, ultimately, at Mastering is the 35. Just if you can explain why the Mastering on the second group of values and constraints is the 15.
Yeah. Yeah. So when we talk about board behaviors that are correlated with improving student outcomes, I'm getting like a lot of.
Do you have a file on our end?
Okay. There, that's better. Change there. So when we talk about the behaviors correlated that a board can engage in, that are most correlated with improving student outcomes, or setting the context for that, the first is setting goals. The second, then, is monitoring those goals. And then the third highest is those non-negotiable, setting those non-negotiable guardrails. So that is the rationale around that being a little bit lower. The first two are definitely focused on student outcomes, while often those guardrails are focused more on, focus less on student outcomes, and often more on the operational matters of the district. Is that responsive to your question?
Yeah, just for comprehension, it looks like the community is playing a lower role. But with your explanation, I appreciate that. That's good.
Yeah. And if you notice, throughout the rubric, the community, I think the community is mentioned on almost every, every page, though. They are, you're either communicating with them or having that engagement around the goals and guardrails, or around reporting back to the community and being inclusive of them in your continuous improvement and reporting out on that, on those processes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So if we're ready, what we're going to do is just start on the first domain, the Vision and Goals. And who will share what their score was for that?
Where are we?
Where are you?
Some questions, Cindy, just about what page we're on. It should be the very first colored page, and it should say at the top, Vision and Goals.
Yep, Page 2, I believe. Is everybody there?
Yeah, I think we're all here. Does anybody want to share what score they had for that first category? Mike and Brandon are off the hook because they already went today. Eve went, too, I guess. I can share. So I preface this by saying, I think there's a lot of really important work that's going on, and I think very soon, the answer will be very different from the score that I'm giving us. But if I read each category, I do think we're starting at zero. And the reason I say that is because, at least in my time on the board, we had not adopted goals that have the criteria that are mentioned here in that yellow approaching column. Again, I think we are very close. I think in a matter of weeks, we'll be in a very different spot. But I think where we're starting is from the beginning.
Thank you, Ben. Does anyone have a score that's different than that?
You're getting a lot of head shaking from the board, Cindy. I don't think anybody has a.
Question.
Ms. Morosky?
I want to make sure I did this right. In the boxes, it's 35 total. Was I correct in dividing by five and having my max be seven for each box, or no?
No. Yeah, and I guess I didn't explain, I should have explained that. So everything needs to be true in, so actually, the first column, the far-left, not student outcomes focus, you get a zero if any of those are true. Then the only way you move to a 10 is if none of the first column is true and all of the second column is true. And then you can only move to the next column, the Meeting Student Outcomes Focus, if nothing is true in red, all is true in orange, and then you would get 25 points than if all were true in green. So you can either get 0, 10, 25, or 35.
So each box on this page, my stuff, each box is worth 35.
No, each box is, like, the first box is, the first column is zero points. The second column is 10 points. The third column is 25, and then the fourth column is 35 points. So if I scored it a zero because we have not adopted a vision, we've not adopted goals, we, at that time, we have hosted some opportunities to listen, but that's it. So it's still a zero in that column. Does that make sense? But after, let's say, if it's in February, once we've done all of those things, now we're moving to, we've adopted a vision, we've adopted, we've collaborated with the superintendent, blah, 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 then I would give it a 10. Because we would have met some of those in there.
Mr. Morosky, does that feel clear?
No, but I'm good.
Wait, you sure? Okay. We want to make sure people get clear if they would like anything. And thank you, Dr. Moffett. Can I interrupt you?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Great. Great job explaining. It looks like Ms. Weinberg is explaining some more.
Yeah.
So are we in agreement that it's a zero?
Well, any dissent on the idea that we're starting, I'm going to just say, starting at the beginning rather than zero, because you got to start somewhere, and we're starting at the beginning.
I understand what's happening.
All right.
Yay.
I can amend my scores. I was, yeah, under a different impression.
That's great.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Weinberg, former CPS teacher.
There you go. I think we're good there, Cindy. Thank you.
Okay, great. Then the next thing that I want you to do is to take a few minutes, look at all of those points, or all of the indicators, and then tell me what you think, where you think you'll be three months from now. Which column will you have, which columns will you have completed? Will you be at 10, 25, or 35 in three months? So just take a few minutes to look at that. And then when somebody's ready to share, please do.
I think we can, I'm sorry, Ben.
Mr. Morosky, please. Yep.
I think we can hop up to 25. And then, I don't think it'll be perfect, but the, you know, we've had a lot of the meetings, the community, I think we'll have our goals and guardrails in three months' time, in early 2023. Stakeholders who have been involved, already are involved in the process, and all goals will last from three to five years, et cetera. I think we can do 25.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Others?
Anybody have something different?
Ms. Bolton, did you want to share?
I think there's some grade escalation there, sir, but.
Where do you think we can be?
Well, Mr. Craig has reminded me that at least we will have adopted our goals. Beyond that, I think we have nothing along this sheet that would indicate there's any more points. If we're talking about completion instead of, I'm partially there.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Are there others? So we have one for 25, one for 10, I think. Vice President Jones?
Yeah, I think if the timeline is in three months, I don't think we're going to meet all of the student outcomes focus. I do think we will be approaching it because I'm confident that we will have defined what we're looking for. I mean, that's evident in what we're doing, some of the things that we're doing now. So I would say 10 points, the second column, sounds more practical to me, or realistic in terms of where we are, or where we will be in three months.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Mrs. Weinberg?
Yeah, I'm just going to add that I actually think that we could get to the 25 points. So just wanted to agree with.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Vice President Jones?
Just, so the columns, the way the columns are written, we, the criteria is that we have to meet all of those points in there, all of those steps in that process, correct?
And the one, in that one and the one previous, the first column, yep, nothing can be true. And then the rest of the column, everything in there needs to be met.
Hmm, okay.
So we've got a 10, two 10s and two 25s.
Yeah, Cindy, I'll join Mrs. Weinberg and Mr. Morosky on the 25. And my rationale is just to go through them. The board's goals pertain to student outcomes. That's what's in our draft. The next item is there. We have clear interim goals with starting dates and ending dates. I think that's all on schedule for us to be done within the next three months. The interim goals will focus on student outputs. I think we can do that. The next paragraph is about including students, parents, staff, and community members. That's what we're doing right now. I think in three months, we will have done that. The second-to-last one is that they're three to five years. I think that's right. And then, goals and interim goals will be a challenge to the organization and require changes in adult behavior. I think we're being ambitious with the things we want to take on. So I'm going to throw my weight behind Mr. Morosky and Mrs. Weinberg.
Right. Dr. Moffett, do you want to weigh in?
I gave that a 25.
All right. Thank you. So does anybody in the 10 who's mentioned 10? So we have three who have mentioned 10, and then the rest, four at 25. Does anyone, has anyone in the 10 who's said 10, have you been convinced otherwise by your colleagues of what you are, might be able to accomplish in the next three months? Given, given what's on your timeline, the work you're doing now, the potential for adoption of your goals, the superintendent bringing those interim goals and annual targets, your work with the community.
The superintendent, right?
Good afternoon, everyone. So I have a really quick question. As we look at the column for 25, for the 25 points, just curious. So one of the indicators for the 25 points, and we're talking about then the next three months, is the third or fourth down, the board included students, parents, staff, and community members in the goal, which we know is happening right now, and interim goal development process. So are we to assume that the work that we're doing right now, through including all stakeholders in the goal process, is also including them in the interim goal process as well? Or would that look like an additional engagement session? Or additional engagement?
It's only in the goal process.
But on this, so right now, it's only considered the goal process?
Yep. Where are you seeing in the interim goal?
One, two, three, four. If under 25, if you go down to the fourth bullet, the last part B of that sentence after "and" says interim goal development process as well. So we know that we're doing that for the goal. Over in the 10 points, it's the, once we get the goals, then we develop the interim goals. Understood that. But when we think about the stakeholder engagement in the interim process, if we're not including that as a part of the goal process?
Can I jump in for a sec, Superintendent?
Sure.
I think we have a version control issue. Cindy, is the version you're looking at, it doesn't actually say interim goal in there?
That's right. I don't have.
Yeah. Yeah, I think for that issue, you can blame me, because I think what I did was Google Student Outcomes Focus Governance, and then send the rubric link from that to the board office to print for today. And I think the version that they used with us, I'm looking at it now, and it's, I actually asked the board staff to email that to everybody. There are very, very few changes. This happens to be one of them.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
And so there is not an expectation that there would be additional engagement around interim goals. I think that's why Cindy looks like the world's upside down. In any conclusion, I think you can blame on me.
But I do have a question, President Lindy. Because it says under 10 at the bottom, and interim, the board publicly posted the vision goals and interim goals for public comment prior to adoption. So that's, we needed to have met all of the green, I'm sorry, the yellow column prior to the 25. So technically, the interim goals should have had community input, or at least been publicly posted prior to going to the green column where it says, under the fourth one down, the board included students, parents, staff, and community members in the goal and interim goal development process. I think.
And I think that's, I think that's exactly, what you're saying is exactly right. It's the same issue. In this updated version, it took out the interim goals from that process and just said public engagement around the goals.
Under the yellow?
Exactly. Yeah. And what I was just going to add is, I tried to make this right by asking Phyllis and Pat to email everybody a link, which you have in your inboxes. So if you are, and I can share with Eve my computer or anybody who doesn't have a link, but if you, if you look in your email, you'll get exactly the same one that Cindy is looking on. Sure. Yep. So Cindy, how do you recommend we proceed? We have some for 10, some for 25. This is absolutely not a hill I want to die on. I'm all for exceeding expectations. If we set it at 10 and we blow past it and get to 25, I think we can celebrate together. I want to make sure we move through this in a thoughtful and efficient way.
So in my scoring, if this helps, and maybe, maybe I didn't realize that in Ironetta, if you have scores that you would like to give as well, that is, this is a board and superintendent activity, you're not on my screen, which is why I didn't, I wasn't even aware until you spoke that you were here. So sorry about that. Do you want to weigh in, Ironetta? Do you want to weigh in, Ironetta, before we, or Superintendent Wright, before we move on? Now knowing that the, that the interim goals do not need to be posted?
Yeah, so we're still talking about three, three months, right?
Yep.
And the only difference is the fourth one down takes out the interim goals?
That's right.
Yeah, I can see if that's the case, getting to 25 point, the 20, to the, to the green column in three months.
Yeah, and if you want to know, I had you at 35. So I would say 25 is a good, a good place to go, and I have a feeling you're actually going to get. Because if you look at that last one, you're using the, on mastering, you're doing your engagement right now. The superintendent is working on the goal, interim goals, and would be looking at things that are predictive and influenceable. And the board has used the needs assessment data that the superintendent provided in drafting the goals. So we can put 25 if everyone is in agreement with that? And if you get further than that, since that is the bulk of you, the majority had 25, are we all good with that? 25?
From a process perspective, what I remember was that we, we usually don't vote on things in a committee of the whole unless we've re-noticed it as a, as a business meeting. But I think we would vote on basically what our committee is recommending to our full board in our next meeting. And so we could, we could say, there's a recommendation coming out of the committee where the majority of the committee was for 25. And then if people really feel like that's wrong, they can vote against it. Or, or if they feel like it's fine, they can vote for it. But that would give us a way to make sure everybody gets to be, be true to what they think is right, and we create a way to move it forward.
Okay.
Mr. Marowski?
Oh, sorry. Do we have to vote on this? I mean, we can just kind of drag and write?
I think, I think if we, if we get to a place where everybody agrees, I don't think we need to vote on it. If we have a place where there is disagreement, I would like to get, get clear on what, what the majority of the board is supporting. I think we would do that at a business meeting. But I think, you know, first choice would be we're, we're at a consensus. And this is, as I mentioned, not, not a hill I want to die on. I just want to see us make progress.
Okay. So I'm going to write down 25, and then we can move on to the next?
That sounds great.
All right. So we're going to do the same thing for the next page. And we can, now that we know the process, we can maybe move through it a little, little quicker. So values and guardrails, who, who will share their score for where you're at right now?
Mr. Craig?
I think for the same reason that we voted on the, on the goals at zero, that I think, since we haven't technically adopted the guardrails yet, that we are still at zero.
Anyone disagree? Anyone have something different? Yeah, thank you.
I will share I had the same thing. Anyone else have a different one? See some head shakes, no? I think you got a lot of folks for starting at the beginning, Cindy.
Excellent. So we'll, we'll put that as the baseline. And then, where do you think you can be in the next three months? Anyone ready to share?
Mr. Craig? Sure. Sure. I think we could, again, for probably the same reasons that we looked at for goals, get to meeting student focus, or student outcome focus. I don't know that we, I mean, I think it'd be ambitious to get to mastering, but I think we could get to meeting for the same general idea that we got to with regard to goals.
Does anyone have anything different?
I do not have anything different. See some people shaking their head, no? Any dissent? This is getting easier, Cindy. Thank you for your help.
Sure. The one thing I'm going to point out, though, is the fourth item down on meeting student outcomes focus. The board has considered adoption of one or more theories of action to drive the school system's overall strategic direction. If there is a permanent superintendent, that person was included in the theory consideration process. So that would be the one thing that I would see as not happening at this point in time. Anybody?
I think, Cindy, I think that's a good point. I was, I had to look up theory of action in the glossary at the end to make sure I was understanding how it was being used here. And I do think we will have that from the strategic planning process, but I don't think the strategic plan process will be done three months from now. It'll be, it'll be well underway and almost done. And I think that would, that would, that is a good point. And I think it, from, from my perspective, I'd certainly support a five on that, like approaching column for three months from now, but I, but I think we'll be on our way.
Okay. Any? Everyone okay with five? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Seeing a lot of fives, and Eve has a question. I think, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think the five is okay. But I do think this goes to the point of, as you just mentioned, Ben, about you think that the strategic plan will be done or possibly done in three months. Okay, well, that's, okay, because that's.
I think that's why.
I interpreted what you said.
I think it's the opposite. I think it's because it won't be done in three months. I, I think that's a good reason to do yellow instead of green.
Okay. You said, well on our way, that we still have to determine what that means or what that's about. So, okay.
I think that's right. I think we're, yeah.
Thanks. And that's been my concern throughout this, is not sure.
Yeah.
How far along we are. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. Go ahead, Cindy, I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know if I heard someone else speaking. All right. So we have that at five, and then, and I think that is probably the only point that you won't be at, or that one item. Otherwise, quite a bit will be achieved on that page despite not moving into the next scoring column. And that is something, not all of this is necessarily linear. You're going to have things that you've achieved in various columns, but until, until you move from left to right, completely filling those columns, the, the scoring doesn't happen, even though good work is being, being done and you're, you're moving through the process. Okay. Same thing on monitoring and accountability. Does, how about we start this way? Does anyone disagree that you would be starting at the beginning? In other words, scoring in the zero column?
Cindy, I think everybody is with you.
Okay. And then the next question would be in three months?
Mr. Craig, yeah?
I, this is one where I actually think we may still be at zero, but, but not necessarily because we're not doing stuff, but because the stuff within there requires us to do stuff that takes longer than three months to do. And so I don't know that we would have, you know, enough to say that 10% of our board meetings are dedicated towards monitoring the goals that we don't have any information on at that point.
I mean, it might, Mr. Craig, to, to your point, it might be six to nine months before we have data on those particular goals because they're going to be about next school year, which hasn't started yet. So I, I, I agree. I, I think, Cindy, unless you tell us that it's a terrible idea, I think, I think we're all saying we might still be at zero, but not because it's bad, but because we're actually moving in a really good direction.
Yep. That's, that's exactly it, exactly as Mr. Craig pointed out. This is one of those domains that is going to take a, a little while to continue achieving. There will be a number of things through the scheduling of monitoring reports, in a monitoring calendar, that's all a part of that process. So there, there will be things that you're ticking off as you go, but to actually fulfill the full column, it will take a little bit of time. And definitely right, that's not, not bad, it's just that it's a work in progress. Okay. So then, moving on to. The communication and collaboration. I think. I think I'm going to guess that our next three, because every, every column, every zero is about adopting goals. So I think we can, or I should ask, can we agree that the remaining are all going to be zeros and that the baseline is going to be zero?
Any concerns about that? Lots of head nods. I think we're good.
Okay. All right. So now let's start with communication and collaboration. The three months, three months out, where? The board believes it might be in three months?
So I have a question. I have, I have a question.
Dr. Roth.
We've not discussed a consent agenda at all. So I almost don't know if that's fair to, to talk about that in three months because I think that requires further discussion, which I don't think is going to be one board meeting. So I don't, I don't really know how we can look at that one. Because in order to go to one point, you need, it says all consent eligible items were placed on the consent agenda. So that would mean that we've discussed that and agreed to do that as a board, which we haven't. So we, I think in three months, we'll be at zero.
Mr. Marowski is agreeing. Mr. Craig is agreeing. I, I think, I think we have other things we're focused on in the near term. I'm certainly fine with zero. I do think we, I think we talked about it during part of the two-day thing way back in June, but even if we did, we certainly have not talked about it since then. And I, I'm certainly fine with zero. And any dissent, including Cindy, if you think we're, we're being under ambitious?
I think, I think for the rationale that Dr. Moffett gave, that's, I would recommend the same.
I'm in a.
Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I'm in agreement with what people have said, but I, again, just to ask a question, not quite understanding the, the wisdom of some of the things in green.
Um, so.
Can you give an example, Ms. Bolton?
Well, I mean, you know, the board made no edits to the board's regularly scheduled meeting agenda during the meeting and during the three business days before. I mean, there's, I'm just talking in terms of reality, and also continually, as we move through this, there's more and more things. Is it that we, that somehow that measures we've become more efficient? Is that, is it the efficiency piece there that, that we're valuing? Or that we're trying to get to? Just trying to understand the wisdom of, of.
Yeah.
Okay. If it's about efficiency?
So it's about, I would say it's about efficiency. It's about the board having done, as, as you move through over the next six, eight, 12 months, and you are looking at your agenda processes, you're looking at your scheduling processes, all of, all of those things. It'll be around the efficiencies, around. You know, you might have processes where you're getting the agenda earlier so you can have, the board can have its homework done further ahead so that things don't need to be, be pulled or, yeah. So there, there will be various efficiencies and, and not just for the sake of efficiency, but just to make your time together more effective and more student outcomes focused and really making the main thing, the main thing.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, Cindy. So it sounds like the, the consensus from the board is a zero three months from now. Any dissent? Okay, moving on.
All right. Same thing for unity and trust. What, what do you see in three months?
I'm, I'm happy to open a first thought here, which, which is kind of in line with, with what Mr. Craig was saying earlier. Like, I do think these are good and important things for us to do. I think we should do them. I think we will do them. I don't think we will be doing them over the next three months. Just because they're not, not as important as a series of other things we're already working on at exactly the same time. And I'm happy to be wrong about that. I'm open to being moved on that, but, but I would, I would be okay with saying in three months, we may be in the same place.
And zero?
Ms. Jones, yeah, I was saying a zero in, in three months. Mr. Marowski?
I hear what you're saying, but when I look at the one point, honest, aside from the second piece about adopting a policy, or I'm sorry, yeah, that one, which I don't think is an enormous lift in them, but all the others, we kind of do. Like, I, I think we could be at a one, honestly, assuming we could get aligned on, on that second one. And I realize that's a big one, but we've spent a long time already talking about like how, you know, we're going to interact with the superintendent, the way communication flows. We have proven, proven, my goodness, I don't know if that's the word. We've approved, you know, superintendent's evaluation, ways we're going to communicate. So I don't know that that, I think that's something that can happen in three months because the other stuff already happened.
Mr. Marowski, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just to be contrary, I, I think we'll have five points in three months. I don't know what we wouldn't be able to do in three months. I mean, in three months, I can memorize the board's goals. I mean, these, come on, these are rudimentary kind of things that are not necessarily about deliberation or whatever. These are, these are, these are things that should be done, and actually, it's required by law that we should be at three points at least on the ethics thing.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Other board members want to go? I just, I was going to point a challenge on that a little bit, like if you, and I'm, again, happy to be wrong about this, but the, the second bullet on the yellow column talks about adopting a policy or procedure requiring, nope, we did that one. Who is the other one? The third one. The board reviews all policies governing board operating procedure at least once during every length of time equal to a board member's term of office. Maybe I'm wrong. We, we get through all the policies on a three-year cycle?
Or sooner or later.
I just was thinking, like, over the course, do we know for sure that within every board member's four-year term, we'll wind up reviewing all of the board bylaws? If that's already true, I guess that is true.
We follow the Bates model and the Marowski chairmanship, yes.
Ms. Jones?
I, I believe the standard, and I, in the standard every three years, so it would hit everybody's term, I think, because.
And we're having fewer and fewer policies, too.
Okay, so maybe, so Eve says five.
Oh, this is pitiful. Five, we can do this.
Cindy, do you have a recommendation for us? I'll go five. If, if everybody wants to go five, I'll go five, but.
Five, baby.
Um, you need to have a recent score of 80 or higher to get five. So.
Need to have a.
So the last item, the last item on meeting, mastering student outcomes focus. the last item on mastering student outcomes focus, where you score an 80 or higher, that will be the, the item that will keep you out of the five range.
Yeah. So maybe three. Would you three?
Sure. You all need some more visionary experiences.
So we're, so I think, I think we're, I think we're at a three and if Eve can challenge us to get to a five, we'll overperform.
I think I brought you all up.
You did. I was at a zero. Thank you, Eve.
You were a zero and I brought you up to three. So that starts to make up for me having zero.
Three, we'll go with three.
Eve is often my source of inspiration. So I think Cindy, we're on our last one, which is continuous improvement. Thank you.
So, so what do you see in three months?
Put the holidays in there. We can do it.
Superintendent Wright?
So one of these that I have a question about, and we're on the one for continuous improvement, right?
That's right.
The second one down, so the first one, I know that we've already started a process of doing that. The second one down, I have, I would, I think we want to discuss a little bit because if I'm reading this correctly, this is talking about staff. So that's all staff, me and any other staff member and beginning to track the time. So if that's the case, then that would be something, if we're, if our goal is to go beyond a one, that, that's a big one because I don't know if that's one that we've ever talked about, even though it's one that is really, really important.
Thanks, Superintendent. Other perspective? I'll just add that I think I agree with the superintendent and we have so many things we're working on. If we were to keep this at a zero or a one, I would be perfectly supportive of that, but I'll, I'll support the will of the, of the board. She called me a downer.
You're a downer. Let's just be one.
We have a lot of support for one. Anybody opposed to that?
Just remind you.
All right. Eve can get us to a five, but our official score is one.
Okay. But I do want to lift up Superintendent Wright's point about tracking the average annual cost of staff time. That is, that does take a lift on the superintendent and her staff's part because there is a process of where they will need to be keeping track of that data in order to, so if, if that's not something that you want to put on the superintendent's plate in the next three months, then you may consider leaving it at a zero and scheduling that further out. But if, if that's something you think you will.
I just think we're, Cindy, I think it's a fabulous point and I think, as I hear you say it, we're going to be asking a lot around strategic planning. And so I think that that feels more important. I mean, this, this is important, what's in that column. I just don't know that it's the most important thing in the next three months. Would people be opposed to going to zero? Thanks, Dr. Mofat. Thanks, Mr. Craig. Okay. I think, I think we're going to keep that one at zero. And thank you for the pushback, everybody, on each.
And the, and the thing I want to remind is that, like I said earlier, there, this doesn't, isn't necessarily linear. So even if you're not going to reach the next score, there are probably items in some of those columns that would be easier lifts to start on if you decided. But, so just wanted to make that point as well. Okay. So then the next thing that's going to happen is that I'm going to, I will go ahead and put together just a, a simple report with what your consensus baseline is, as well as your projected three month score and give that to you. There is, actually, it's within the framework itself that you adopt the results of the self-evaluation. So that can be put on an agenda, subsequent agenda for adoption. And then, and then plan to go through this process again in a few months. And we'll make sure that that gets on your, on your timeline and agenda calendar for that. So are there any questions about that before we wrap up?
Cindy, I think we're in okay shape and I want to say thank you very, very, very much for being with us today. We may try to hit a few other agenda items here, but thank you and we really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay.
We'll catch you next time. Anything else you want to share with us before we move to our next item?
I don't think so. I look forward to, to seeing all the input that you're gathering from the community and continuing on with the rest of the process in adopting goals and guardrails. Good to see you all.
Good to see you too. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Mofat?
I just have a question. Can you clarify what is meant by when you say adopt this? Are we saying this is resolutionable? Or are we saying this, hey, this is just a recommendation? You guys have a baseline? You all are all agreeing to this? You know, like what, what does that mean in legalese? I kind of want to understand what it, what, what words we're using. That's my first question. My second question is, Cindy, are we able to get copies of what we're submitting for the, for the goals and guardrails and for, you know, can we see what each other are submitting in real time? Or do we have to wait for all of that? So I have two questions. My first question is, what is, what do you mean Cindy by adoption? Because I want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure.
On what you, what you're, what you're meaning by that. And then can we get the results that we're submitting on the Google forms from everyone else?
Okay. So first question, when we talk about adopting, it's just that, that you formally agree to, that that is the baseline and target scores for your self-evaluation, that those were the results of your self-evaluation. I don't, as far as whether there needs to be a resolution, I, I don't think so, but that might be something that needs to answer.
I think, I was trying to share earlier, like I think we got to a point where all of us are fine with the baseline and the three-month goals for where we want to be. But I think we've effectively come to a consensus and I don't think there needs to be a resolution. I think if, if there's really differences of opinion about where we should be three months from now, I think we should vote on that so that we get clarity on where we're headed. But I actually don't think that there's disagreement. So I think in this context, I certainly don't, I'm happy to do it if people want to, but I certainly don't see a need for, for an additional resolution.
I just wanted to understand, is this something, you know, we're doing a formal vote resolution type, we're, we're making this formal? Or is this just something that this is an exercise? We're, we're going through this. I wanted clarification on that.
Do you feel like you got that clarification or is it still unclear? You feel good? Okay. And then the second question was about the Google form?
Can we be receiving, I think I sent this in an email, didn't get a response. Can we get a copy of the forms that we are submitting? Because I know I submit the form and it doesn't come back to me. Sometimes you can make it so that you get a copy of what you submit. So I started copying my own, but can we get a copy of what everyone's forms are?
The notes?
The notes.
So like, so what will be doing, providing both, I'm sorry, I still, I'm getting feedback on my end. We'll be providing both a synopsis with the common themes and then we can provide all of the, all of the data that was entered broad in its raw form. Is that what you're?
Are you asking Dr. Mofat about like getting it not just at the end, but getting it as we go?
That is correct. And I don't want a synopsis. I would like to have the raw data submitted and your synopsis. But my question is, can we get a copy of the raw data that is submitted per session, per group, either as it's done or next week is the end of that? So that, that's my question. I don't prefer a synopsis.
Okay.
I want, I mean, I prefer the, I prefer the synopsis. I like that, but I would like the raw data as well.
I can provide both. I might not be able to provide it before the close of the sessions, but I can provide it. Does that work?
So then everybody has access to the summary and all the information. Mrs. Weinberg? And then Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. I had requested that as well and thank you for agreeing to send that information, the synopsis and including all of the session notes. I think it's going to be very important for us to have access to that as well.
Not a problem.
Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I agree. It'd be great. I don't, I don't feel compelled to have it as it's done, but I do want to see the, the full body of the work, you know, prior to us doing whatever we're going to be doing in December or, or before December to modify those. And the synopsis will be greatly appreciated. I also want to get some clarity about people or organizations that attended. Is, I think that would be important for us to, you know, maybe have a good view of the, the, the nature of the organizations that might have been represented. But I really would prefer not to publish names of who were in each session. Organizations, yes. Or types, yes. I just, I'd hate to personalize it in that way.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. President Jones?
So the, the list that I, I think the list that you're referring to, Ms. Bolton, we probably, don't we get that information from the attendance sheets?
We, we do.
Okay. And so you want just.
I prefer it not be published as such because we, yeah.
No, but my suggestion would be then that might be an assignment to our staff to help gather that information. To our staff, yes. To the board's staff.
Fill us in.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Our extensive staff.
If, if people have any last questions for Cindy, please, please ask them. We do have a couple other topics we would like to talk about and Mr. Craig and I have a parent session in this room at six for our, for feedback on our goals and guardrails. So, and we can do all those things. I just want to make sure we also move us forward. Okay. Great. Cindy, thank you. We appreciate it. And we will catch you next time.
All right. Bye-bye.
Okay. So with that, we're going to move on to our next item on our agenda, which is a presentation on beginning of year assessment review. We will turn it over to our superintendent.
Okay. So one of the ways that we talked about organizing the Cal agenda was based on a combination of what was in the student outcomes, I'm sorry, thinking student outcomes, what was in the student achievement committee or work plan for student achievement. And when we, when health and safety sunsets, if it sunsets, then picking up that work plan and including those things in the agenda for Cal as well. So that's where those, that's where these two items actually come from. The first one is beginning of the year assessment review. So I did provide that information to you earlier, just for you to be able to review where we are now that we have finished, we've ended the first quarter and we have also finished, we have also finished our first quarter, our beginning of the year assessments. And so what you have, this was the document that I provided to you earlier, as well as in the, I sent it in the, in the, in the weekly updates. It was the attachment to the update. So in the attachments to the updates, I sent two documents. One was this and the other one was the discipline, the discipline data that was requested. So that was sent prior to, but they want you to have a hard copy as well. The other document we discussed earlier, as we were preparing for the academic data review, so this is just a comparison of where we were for our beginning of the year assessment data last school year and where we ended on the spring assessment data at the end of the school year. So giving those two pieces or three pieces, I guess, of information, just to kind of frame our conversation a little bit. So there are a few things that we noticed in, Rob, I'm looking at the fall benchmark data summary, the one that's on board. Thank you. So we have in our district summary, we're, we have both reading, math and science. That's in the document that I sent to you. We broke it down this way in a different way that I think, that I think it's been looked at previously. And one of the things, when we talked about next steps in terms of where we're going with report card and how we're beginning to monitor that information, one of the things that we noticed or that I would like to call our attention to is the first, in the first section where we see completion percentage, we're looking at district summary. And if we look down at, after about sixth grade, we see that the percentages of students that are required to take the actual assessment and those that take the beginning of the year data, the beginning of the year test, that percentage goes down. That's relevant because this is one of the benchmarks that we use to help teachers, that teachers also use to help determine really where students need to focus. So if you have not all of your students getting that baseline information or getting that baseline data on them, then it makes it a little more challenging as you're looking at doing the next step. So that's the first. The second, the larger columns, we broke down as well in the categories for how we are assessed, thinking about proficiency. So as we began to talk about school grades and we talk about really where we're looking to go next with school grades, we have spent more time in the district really focused on growth versus proficiency. And I think one of the reasons that that's been in talking to staff, getting feedback from teachers and talking to principals is the thought has been, it's, it's more challenging for our students to get to proficiency. So therefore we've done an intentional focus around growth. I propose that as we focus on proficiency, growth will happen, but we do want to make certain that more of our students are improving in terms of proficiency. So the last column, the last two columns right there, thank you. The last two columns for the top two, it gives us our early learning percentages for where we are right now, based on those beginning of the year data. And then all of the other columns, Rob, if you can move this way for me a little bit so I can see the first two columns. Thank, thank you right there. Then we start at third grade and then we go down from there. We also know that ninth grade in terms of ELA is not included in, in terms of an assessment that the students have to pass in terms of movement and where they go next. What you don't see is a composite because our numbers are not given in composites. This is, this is where we are individually by grade level. In order to get to the composites, what I've done in the past, what I, what I did the last time we talked about these numbers is, it's not the best way to do it, but take an average of the average and that gave us a ballpark of where we were collectively. So as we break down beginning of the year, if we compare beginning of the year to beginning of the year, we have three areas where we are a little bit higher at the beginning of the year now than we were at the beginning of the year last year. I'm sorry, two areas. And that is third grade, we are slightly higher in third grade. If you look at the second sheet, it gives you the beginning of the year numbers for, for each grade level. For third grade, we're slightly higher than we were at the beginning of the year last year. And for fourth grade, we're slightly higher as well. The other grade levels, we have work to do. So any questions about the reading numbers before we look at math? Or would it be better for me to go through reading and math and then open for questions?
If board members have questions now, then certainly share them. And they have more as we keep going too. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Just sometimes I say this also to the treasurer about this. If, are you changing, we're looking at things differently, you said, than arranging things somewhat differently, the data? Are we presenting it in a different way? Are we measuring something? I mean, I'm just trying to see, you know, as we transition, if it's new or different, what it would have looked like in the, just for one year or whatever, in the previous format. So if there's a way to compare the data. format. So if there's a way to compare the data instead of starting fresh with another way of doing it, I'm not being very clear, but I think you understand what I'm saying.
I think I understand. So as I understand from the team, in previous years, the board received information that looked like this document.
Okay.
That broke down, it looks like what I sent the other day. We used really the same format. Actually, it looked, it started like this, but it had charts that were a few charts instead. So what it did not break down was the individual grade, the individual levels, i.e. limited, the number in limited, the number in basic, the number proficient, so forth and so on. But there was still a comparison to the benchmark information based on the proficiency. That's what was shared with me. So there is not, we're not looking at that data any differently. We're comparing where we started at the beginning of the year last year to where we're starting at the beginning of the year this year. The assessments for most of the schools are the same. So for sixth grade up, we still use the math assessment, so it's the same one. The ELA assessment, the reading assessment, we have 30 schools that are piloting a different assessment, that they're piloting I-Ready that was decided last year as a pilot. So we use I-Ready for math for everyone K through six. That hasn't changed either. So it's really looking at how we're thinking about the proficiency versus not. In terms of goal setting previously, the way that one plan was done, it was done based on growth, not a lot of conversation around proficiency.
If I could just add something, so I understand the reason, I think I understand the reasoning for that. I'm just saying, will there be other ways that we could be able to see growth? Are we measuring growth at all, or are we just going for the percentage of proficiency?
No. So in each of these areas, each, so this is the baseline information.
Okay.
So in late January, we will do mid-year. And so for mid-year, we would compare each of these categories or baseline to where we are at the mid-year. So that would be another determination for growth. Baseline is where we're starting now, and then mid-year, we do another, the same assessment again.
So it's a growth in proficiency by measuring it?
Yes. Yes, but growth in each area as well. So for example, if we were to, I won't add numbers, but if we say limited, the number of students...
Wait a minute, you're the math professor.
That's okay. The number of students that are limited right now, right, for the baseline in this first column. In the spring, I'm sorry, in the winter, when we take the mid-year, the goal would be that there are fewer students in limited than there are in limited now, because limited is where we start. So the goal is that we would show growth because we would continue to move up. So the number of students in limited would become less, which means the number of students in basic would become more, the number of students in proficient would become more. So then we would then compare, same kind of chart, but we would then compare apples to apples. This is where we started in this school year at baseline, and this is where we are at the mid-year.
Right. And then if I can just, for the public's sake, and these things get published and known, and people write articles, thinking in terms of footnotes or asterisks on some of these things to explain, okay, where was COVID in this, and then explaining how you just explained moving, I think it'd be great in a published document to have a little bit more explanation sort of at the bottom of what this is really reflecting or what we should be looking for, maybe.
Okay.
Just because this, I think it would be helpful to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Other questions? Dr. Moffett.
Thank you. I think this is a little confusing to see, but I get it. Under, I'm kind of concerned about the third, the seventh, and eighth, so I pulled them out. We've got under third grade, limited in basic, 69%, seventh grade, 75.8% for limited in basic, and eighth grade, 84.1%. What's the plan? Can you outline a plan to move them based on your definition of growth and proficiency? So we should see the limited go down, and I know you outlined it, I really kind of want the public to understand this, too. We should see in the spring, limited go down, proficiency go up. So let's just look at seventh grade. We've got under limited in basic, so our seventh graders have the 75.8 together, which is the 47.8 and 28, together to get the 75.8. What's the plan to get that number down and proficient, which is 15.9, up?
So I think there are three things to call out. The first is, this is the data, baseline data, that goes along with the review of the report card data to start with. So if we go back, if we recall collectively, when we talked about the report cards, the very last slide on the report card, the report card presentation that I did, covered about five things that we would focus on as a district as we're looking to move forward. I would like to say that it's an if-then statement, but it is not. Our students did not just get in these areas. They did not just begin to have the challenges that they have now. And so starting in August, the kind of work that we can do leading up to that time has to be elevated for the next school year. So we're walking in the middle of the conversation to begin to move the students forward. So I want to start with that first. The second is, in that slide, we talked about several things. One, if we recall, was the focus on core, our core instruction and what we're looking at in terms of core. So as we've come back and had several conversations around the evaluation, we talked quite a bit about professional development, and not just the fact that we're monitoring what's happened, that we give professional development, but one of the areas that was really lifted was how we are then monitoring what's happening in the classroom as a follow-up to that professional development. So that was one of the areas that the board voted on as a part of the evaluation. The second is looking at what we're doing in Tier Two instruction, and that's an area across the district that is in collective need of support, that we are beginning to work through some of that right now, but it's going to take some time because that's not, it's not an area that's been focused on collectively. And so when we talk about Tier Two, it's looking at where students are in terms of their skill deficits, and then what are the, what's programmatically, what are we doing with them collectively around those skill deficits? So that would be the second. The third would be in then a Tier Three, and that would be your students that are in the most challenged category. So if I were further break this information down based on our student, we have a population of 30 schools that are using I-Ready right now, for example, as an assessment. There are, when you begin to really look at the reading deficits, there are some students, the most of our students, that their true challenges are in the phonics and basic skills area. And those are outside of third grade. So that's moving up to the other grade levels. So the work for us, it has to be very intentional, and it has to start with monitoring, and collectively, that's just not something that we have worked on across the board.
So I kind of want to get a little clarity on the answer to my question. The plan is to focus on core instruction, professional development with classroom monitoring, Tier Two instruction with a focus on skilled deficiencies, deficits? And then you said Tier Three focus. What was Tier Three focused on?
Yeah, so Tier Three, so when you think about, Tier One is what everybody gets. Tier Two is what smaller groups of students get, but it's still connected to where they are, and they're closer to standard. Tier Three is considered in the greatest need. And in this particular case, for the reading area, the greatest need for those students is there is a breakdown in phonics and phonemic awareness. So that's where their greatest challenge is.
Okay. Do you happen to have this data segregated by demographic, like boy, girl, African-Americans, or school? Do you happen to have any of this data that way?
I do not have it. I do not, I don't have it by male, female, or that demographic, but I do have it broken down by school.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Vice President Jones.
Yes. Superintendent, thank you for this report. I noticed on the agenda, it says beginning of the year assessment review. I want to say, and I hear and respect and value the questions and the input that my colleagues are giving, and I agree with that. But I want to just add this. To me personally, this is the first sort of real presentation that sort of follows what we were thinking when we put Cal, when we put the Student Achievement Agenda under Cal. This, to me, gives us a baseline for how we begin to build on and work through all the legitimate questions that I think my board colleagues are asking for. So I appreciate that. And I think we're eager, what I hear in the voices of my colleagues is enthusiasm that we even got this far, right? And I say that because you made the statement that, you said that information has not been focused collectively. And that was my, personally, that was my frustration in student achievement. It was nobody's fault. It was nobody's fault, and I want to be clear about that. But it feels like that, I can remember never feeling like I really knew what the information was. And I think this, and I, it takes me a long time to digest data, so I have to go home and read this and digest it. But the questions that are being asked are quite legitimate in the sense that while this may look good and sound good and is presented to us, all of the questions are going to come up so that the board is well aware of how we're going to grow and advance, and how are we going to know that our students are indeed learning better and doing things better and, you know, grasping the information. So I do appreciate those comments. But I also want to say, as a board member, I think we also recognize that, you know, we can't get everything at once, but this is sort of the building block, in my opinion, for us moving forward on this. So it really is just a thank you for the basic information, and I know we still have a lot of work to do, and I appreciate that opportunity. And if there are ever any questions about the Student Achievement piece, and then maybe we can talk about that as well, because I still have lots of questions and concerns about just that transition. And I believe we're going to talk about that maybe. I believe that that's what's on the agenda today. So it might be helpful, that discussion, I think, would be helpful to have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I think I also want to, as a part of our beginning conversations, you know, we also want to make sure, and as we're going through our student governance, our student outcomes governance process, and we're beginning to think about data, we also want to manage our own expectations. So when we come back and look at this information in February or mid-February, I know that our goal is to see improvement across the board, and that's what we will be looking for, improvement across the board. But to manage the expectation, we want to make sure that we're clear, this did not, our students did not get to this snapshot overnight. And so that's why it is important for us to look at how we are monitoring growth, what next is happening with growth. If we go back to this document, if everyone would just take one second to just look at this document, this document compares where we were in the fall for the beginning of the year assessment, so the same time last year, the data, and where we ended on the state assessment. So what we actually score on the state assessment. And while there are areas of celebration, there are areas that we know the students took the assessments in September, October, they took the state assessments in April or May, and this is where the numbers showed out, this is what the numbers showed to be. So I do think it's important that as we are monitoring throughout the process, we're recognizing that we have a lot of work that we're beginning to do, and work that will become more strategic as we do that work together.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. I know Mrs. Weinberg had a question, too.
Yes, I just have a question in the comments. Superintendent Wright, thank you so much for saying we do have a lot of work to do. The one thing that I just would like to piggyback off of Board Member Moffett, looking at the data that you provided, I appreciate that you did the data by the grades, but I'm more interested to see our particular schools. So I don't know how, if you can present that with the information. So for example, you're saying for first grade that we had over 2,700 students tested, right? I would like to know from each of our schools of that particular number, what exactly was the breakdown of the different schools? I think that could provide an additional data point for us to kind of look at as well, to kind of see, well, what are the top 10 schools that are having some issues, or what are our top 10 schools that are doing great? So I don't know if you're able to provide that and give us that information as well.
I will download it for you now and send it to each board member.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's quick and fast.
I have the data. Just so we know, this is the conversation that we are having, but we start data conversations with principals on Monday. So it's not just for, this information is not just for the purpose of this meeting.
And thank you for that. I do have one other question. So with you having the data, I know that Board Member Moffett asked about, in terms of, you don't have it segregated through male versus female, or by race or whatever, so you just have it by the school?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. I know Ms. Bolden has a second question or comment. Anybody who's not gone yet, want to go? I want to share real briefly a first time, and then we'll go to Ms. Bolden. Thank you, I think, for sharing this with us. I just want to say two things. One is, in my past professional experience, the organizations that are honest about where we are are the ones that make real improvement. And so I just think it is a great start that we are being clear and transparent and honest about where we're starting, and that is 100% consistent with saying we have a whole lot of work to do. But I think that kind of face-the-facts orientation is one that feels really important. The second thing I wanted to say is, and this goes back to the presentation you gave about the report cards, which you referenced earlier, I do believe deeply in this commitment to making sure students have a really good curriculum in front of them, that we're supporting teachers, great professional development on how to engage kids, and not just in a rote way, but in a way that kids are excited about, and that we see that as part of our work to support teachers in delivering that content, and that that's a part of the plan for the year. And I want to say thank you. Ms. Bolden.
Yeah, very quickly, I appreciate the data, and I can kind of almost go back in terms of the elementary initiative 15 years ago. This is sort of a way to get started there. I worry about the school by school, but we want to see it, but we have to be careful how it is presented for obvious reasons. The other piece is, I'm particular about comparing grade level among schools, because I think that really starts to show maybe who's actually doing the curriculum, what success is happening. You know, as much as I like geography, I wish we could organize the district and, okay, eighth grade, and be able to compare at grade level. I think that's, could possibly, you're the expert, but I think that could possibly be somewhat revelatory. And so interested in the grades among the schools and between schools. Thanks.
Thanks, Ms. Bolden. Dr. Moffett?
So I really, I have a lot of questions, but for the interest of time, I'm going to stick with just one major one additionally. We have a, I'm very interested, I'll tell you what my interest is, and then you can answer it how you want. We, in looking at the seventh and eighth grade, we know that we've got 75.8% under limited and basic, and I'm assuming that this is the fall of this year, 84.1% limited and basic, but we do know that we have transportation issues. I asked this question of, at the last Cal, and I'm going to ask it again, and I'm going to say it in a different way. I would really like to know, since we already have three-fourths of our students that are testing limited and basic coming in the door as a baseline, what are we doing to remediate because they are having transportation issues which are not their fault? I understand we got transportation issues that have been inherited, but I really am interested in the plan beyond just those four or five areas that you mentioned. Like what is it that we're doing for our students so that they're coming in the door already limited and basic, no fault of their own, they're not being able to, some of them are missing first bell, some of them are missing second bell. I had asked for, what classes are they missing? Is it a reading class? Is it an ELA? Or is it a science or a math class? And then what is the plan to remediate?
And then what is the plan to remediate that?
So I will, I did, this is information that I share. If you could just take one and pass it if you don't mind. So, you know, that question was asked, it's been asked several times, and I'm going to respond to that question the best that I can, um, and then give the data as we have it. So the first is, um, I think that collectively we know that we, as a district, um, do not have one system for verifying the students that are getting on the bus and when they're getting off the bus. So that is just the reality. That's at any grade level. It has nothing to do with metro. Um, that's the way that it is across all grades. Um, it's something that we are definitely looking at as we move into next school year, but it's not something that we have right now. The second thing is, what was shared is that we thought that it was very, or it was shared with me that it was easy, um, for principals to just pull this information, the students that are late and how they are, um, how they're responding or what they're missing in terms of academics. Being a high school principal, um, I know that that does not seem simple. However, I did poll all of the high school, all of the schools that have seventh and eighth grade. And at this time, 15 of the schools have responded. And of those 15 schools, all of them, with the exception of one, have shared that their student, they do not have students that have been impacted by transportation. What they have also shared is what they've done. They have been able to pinpoint, um, the, the areas that students may have challenge in. But what they've done for those students is offered extended time. They have offered additional support during lunch, and they've offered additional support after school. So that's what the principals have shared based on the specific ask to them. What you have, that, that we also broke down for you is by school. And when you look at the information, I think it's also clear that there is not one correlation across the board. Um, so if you look at this document, um, and Rob, this is the one that's the, the analysis. If you sort it from on-time performance, the lowest, to the highest in terms of transportation, and you look at the number of students and the number of students that have below average grades, so Ds or Fs, there is not a direct correlation. So that becomes another data point in terms of referencing that. The other thing that we also, for, and I want, we, I did share in the last board meeting, um, the on-time performance with each of the school, for each of the schools. But I also have, outside of just the seventh and eighth grade, I also have that grade distribution across all of the other grades as well. So we, we know that collectively we have had challenges with transportation. Early on, we were asked, what were we going to say to, what, what, what was going to be the plan to make sure that students were not penalized? We had that conversation with schools, schools had that conversation with teachers, and teachers have worked with students. So what the principals have shared, outside of what the data has shared with us, and this is data out of the system, what the principals have shared is if there has been an issue at this point with the grades, it's simply because the work is not being submitted. That's what's been shared specifically. So this, this is two of these, but I will send them to everyone. Dr. Moffett, that one is for you. But this is several pages, and so there was an issue with the printer, so that's a whole set. Okay? And then this is a whole set as well. And then I will email them, that's a whole set also. But I can, I'll email them to everybody as well.
Thank you, Superintendent.
It's just one whole set.
Does anybody? I'll pass that down to folks who'd like one.
So can I ask just a clarifying of my question?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so I, I think rather than grades, C, D, or F, I'm looking at, I'm looking for, a bus arrives at 8:44, that school was supposed to start at eight. How many kids were on that bus? If that bus had 10 students on that, then there's 10 students, regardless of what their grades were that they got. But there were 10 students that were impacted. So their learning was impacted because 10 students arrived late. And so of those 10 students, how many of those students were students with disabilities? And then what is the plan for remediation of those students? I'm not really looking for the grade that they got as much as I'm looking for the impact to the education of the transportation impact that is impacting their education. And so that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for grade. I'm looking for, we know that buses are getting there late. What is that number of students that were on that bus? Because we should have that data. And then from, I mean, we also know some students don't, you know, I don't know if metro is an issue, but of the students that are being marked excused because of transportation, what is that number? And then from that number, identify or disaggregate which students are students with disabilities, what grades they're in, and then what is the plan for remediation of those students? So I don't really want to see grades. I just want to see how is the transportation impacting learning?
That's just, so that, so that I can clarify. I don't know that we know one way that a child is then impacted by learning if we don't do something that connects it to grades. Because based on the principles, because that's where we were asked to go back, based on the principles, there is, they have not identified students that have been impacted by transportation. So, you know, if I come into a class late for any reason, there may be a reason to believe that there is something that I missed during that class that I need to go back and recapture. If schools have teachers that are offering them additional recovery time during the day, they're offering them additional recovery, recovery time online, they're offering them additional recovery time after school, the, the, the one impact that we can say this one thing is what impacted their learning, I would need some additional information on what recommendations we have as the best way to pull that. Because the question that I received was about the impact to the students collectively. And outside of that, there are a lot of different factors that go along, that go along with that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Moffett, for the question. Did you have other pieces?
I understand your question, um, your statement about the grades, but if there has been no impact to their learning, then, then that's what we say. But we know that 10 students that were on that bus that arrived late could have had an impact. So that's what I'm looking at. How many students, and let's just start there. How many students, because of transportation, could have had an impact to their learning? Can we, can we just stay there? What is the transportation issue? If a bus is getting there late, and we know the buses are getting there late, how many students were on the bus? What grade were they in? Were they a student with disability? And then we can go back and look into it. Maybe there was no impact, but that's what I'm looking for.
I understand that that's what you're looking for. And across the board, as I share, um, there is not one way to monitor that and in communicating with the schools. Now, when we get to a system that I am hoping that we get to for next year, as we've talked about, and we're doing, looking at a pilot program for it right now, where we would be able to have a check card for when students are getting on the bus and when they get off the bus, so that we're able to then monitor that and also when they go in the school building. Um, but outside of pulling that information specifically and asking that direct question, there is not one way for us to know that.
So thank you, everybody. There's a lot of important content here and in the rest of the agenda too. I'm going to try to see if we can get through as much of our agenda as we can. If we don't get through all of items three and four, I think let's get as far as we can. But if we don't get through all of items three and four, November is this odd month where we have two Committee of the Whole meetings. And so we'll be back together again in two weeks. And so we'll have an opportunity to chat through anything else on the discipline data review and the board bylaws update. And Eve is going to bring us pizza, which is great. I appreciate that. So I think, um, Superintendent, on, on item three, if, if we were to do your presentation and questions from board members, do you think we could do that in five, 10 minutes? Would you like to do that at the next meeting?
I am fine with, with doing that at the next meeting. That one came from, um, one of the items from health and safety. So it is a part of the health and safety agenda on Monday. So I do plan to review it on Monday as well. But I, just because of some of the other questions that I've gotten from board members across the board, I think that there would be interest for the entire board to hear some of that information as well. So I am fine with doing it at the next Cal. If I can do it just once and do it at the next Cal, that would be great, but that would have to be approved by the, the Chair for Health and Safety.
Okay. Well, then, um, why don't we go ahead and stick with the agenda we have here? Let's get as far through it as we can. With everyone's help, maybe we'll get through all four. And if we don't, we'll pick up next time with whatever we don't get to today. So we'll move to item three.
Are we, are we okay with skipping three and going to four? And then if we run out of time, coming back?
Uh, that, that, that's your preference. That's also fine with me. Can I invite then our General Counsel, Mr. Hoing Up for item four for, for a moment? This came as an assignment from the Policy Committee to the Committee of the Whole. People may remember that over the summer, we, and this has been referenced a couple of times throughout the meeting, um, the topics that have been traditionally in student achievement feel important enough that they get whole board attention. And so we've been, uh, starting to talk about those in these Committee of the Whole meetings. Uh, there was also a discussion in that meeting of having the Health and Safety Committee sunset after this calendar year. Uh, what we have not done is update our bylaws to reflect those changes. What we will not be able to do in the 16 minutes remaining in this meeting is do all of that work. But what I ask are, he would say, very simple, very basic, um, update, kind of merging, I don't even say updates. But Dan, I'll give you a chance to kind of share where we are, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, the Policy Committee, uh, in its first attempt to look at the, uh, Board Policy 0150, this is the bylaws that relate to the organization of the Board, asked that we take a first shot at, um, realigning those responsibilities. All we've done to date is move all of the responsibilities of the Student Achievement Committee and move them to the Committee of the Whole. So beyond that, I, I believe the discussion of the Policy Committee was that, you know, we should review that instead of just moving everything over wholesale and, uh, recommended that the full board, uh, consider that. So I, I'm happy to take notes. I'm happy to receive a red line. And, and then I don't know if it would at some point make sense to return to the Policy Committee to kind of finalize that.
Thanks, um, Mr. Hoing. I think I just, um, this is a really tricky issue to figure out how to manage from a process perspective, because two things seem true at once. One is, is it's a lot of, it's a lot of important work, which means that people should have a chance to weigh in on it. The other thing that is true is it's very hard to do this volume of important work with seven people in a public meeting. Um, and so I'm trying to figure out how we, as a board, can develop a process that balances those two things so that every board member gets a chance to share their perspective on how our bylaws should be updated so that they reflect our new committee structure, but that we do that in a way that is just thoughtful about everybody's time and moves forward in a somewhat efficient way. And I, I like Dan's suggestion here that we, we use this time to get perspective from people to say, hey, here are things that I think are really important. And then we send it back to the Policy Committee so that they can, in a smaller group, really do that work. But they're doing that work informed by what everybody has had a chance to share. It may be the case that board members have some thoughts today. You should share them. And maybe you need a little bit of time to look at this and think about it. That's great. We'll meet again in two weeks. You can share it then. Um, but I, I think we should create a little bit of time. If you have a strong opinion about what should be reflected in changes to our bylaws, please share. If you have other questions or, or other ideas about how we can move this procedurally, I think we want to invite those comments too. Do board members have ideas? Yes. Vice President Jones?
Not having read this yet, so I'm trying to go off the top of my head, which is fine. I do that a lot. I think that one of the things that's important to me, and I, I think it's important just for the whole, uh, sort of optics, I talk about optics all the time, is that the Committee of the Whole be called the Student Achievement, whatever that title is, Committee of the Whole. When I, and I say that because, you know, I've had people express to me how unhappy they are that we don't have a Student Achievement Committee, and they tell me why. And I try to explain to them that the, the, because we are, we do want to be focused on, uh, student outcomes, that we put it under Student Achievement. I mean, we put it under the, um, Committee of the Whole so that all board members would be a part of that process. And, you know, so all the conversations that happen with people about that. So I think instead of just saying, and when we notice this, instead of just noticing it as Committee of the Whole, if we could call it the Student Achievement, or whatever the long title, I never remember it. Uh, Student Achievement District Performance Committee of the Whole or something like that. I think that's important. The only other thing is, uh, and this, this doesn't have to be talked about today. But I think as, when we do talk about this in its completeness, we also have to think about the process in, in Cal. Like, because my understanding is that, um, that the, you know, the superintendent was leading this effort around this committees, but we certainly have, and had, we do have the authority and the ability to ask, to make recommendations or whatever. And I think we have to make sure that in our process, that we are reserving enough time to do what needs to be done in that committee. And, and, and Alman's piece is a little bit different, and we can talk about that too. But I just want to be sure that it stays pure to its mission of being a Committee of the Whole and that we don't get sidetracked by adding agenda items that are not part of what the focus of that committee is. Now granted, I say that, but there's always an exception to the rule. If we have an emergency situation, we need to pass a resolution or whatever. I understand that. But I don't want that to become a standard of practice that, um, that we do that. I would much rather that be an exception to the rule.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Other board members with perspective that they want to share? Ms. Bolden?
Well, on the title, I think that makes sense, but I would like the full title.
That's, I, I said that, I just didn't know it.
Yeah. So the full title is, it at least measures the, kind of the composite of the district improvement and, and instruction as well as just Student Achievement. The other piece though, that is part of this, and I don't care how process we, what process we use, I think we started the work in, in policy, and the Chair particularly wanted to make sure that we had board, uh, input as we did this. I still maintain that one of the things each committee has to do separately though, and then bring back to the board, are those top-line goals for every committee that were based upon embedding the goals from the previous strategic plan. That's the, that's as big as moving whatever we can move from, from, uh, Student Achievement to Committee of the Whole. Because we don't, and the committees can keep or move or whatever, but those, each committee has to figure out the disposal and bring it back to the full board as to what ones of those we keep or don't keep since we don't have that plan anymore.
Okay, so you're seeing that as a recommendation for this committee to look at for all the other committees that exist? Okay.
For the board to do it, or some, or each committee individually since they know what they do and what the, whatever.
Okay. Dr. Moffett, and then Mr. Gray.
So I like the fact that, um, I think Student Achievement under the, the Cal is appropriate. I suggested that the second half of the duties of student, of the Student Achievement Committee be a separate committee because it talks about, if you look at number three on page, on two, three, four, five, perhaps, um, under responsibilities of the Committee of the Whole, it says number three, receive reports and studies about the following human resource issues and comment on these reports and studies when and if appropriate. And so I don't think that that should just all fall underneath the Cal. I think if the Cal is going to be focused on Student Achievement, which I agree, then there needs to be a second, or that the committee needs to still stand to talk about three, five, six, and seven. And so, um, I said that, and, and I think that we need to have the District Performance Committee, if that's what we're going to call it, or whatever that, that second half of that responsibility was called. And then I don't think that we should sunset Health and Safety because I do think we are not completely done with, um, COVID. And I think we've got, um, students and parents are still concerned about safety in schools. So I, I think that we don't do it. So I, I think that we don't do enough time and attention individually in the business meeting, so I just am concerned about that. But I do think that the District Performance is not going to get enough attention lumped into Committee of the Whole. So I say that we keep that as a separate committee and don't sunset Health and Safety.
Okay, just before we get to Mr. Craig, just a comment. I understand what you're saying, and, and it is my understanding, at least some of these items were addressed at some level or the other in policy, some of them, in policy, it just happened that way. So, no, I'm saying that that's my understanding, and when I was, when I was chairing Student Achievement, that some of these items was sort of a natural sort of move to policy just based on policy stuff, just whatever their role is. My, my question about this is, I mean, you're suggesting a separate committee, which I don't know that, you know, I don't know how I feel about a separate committee to address that. But if the board's role is truly governance and policy, I mean, the question I would have is, is it, would it fall under that governance role? And should it be under Committee of the Whole? Which is what you're asking, rather than a separate committee.
Well, what I'm saying is, it was already under Student Achievement and District Performance. And so that's the part that, if we move Student Achievement to the Committee of the Whole, which makes sense to me, the other responsibilities of that committee, which are outlined in three, five, six, and seven, did not fall underneath Committee of the Whole.
That's District Performance.
It's District Performance.
Three, three, five, six, and seven, I would consider District Performance.
Yes. And I'm saying, keep, I was just saying, where does that go? Keep this, keep that committee and just call it District Performance, rather than put it under Committee of the Whole. That's what I was.
So again, go ahead, Vice President Jones. I was going to say, I think, and I recognize I had to step out for a minute, and I'm stepping back in, so I may have missed something, but I think what the win for this conversation is to surface where board members have perspective, not to make decisions. So as long as people can share that, and then we'll send it out to policy, they'll come back with a recommendation to us, and then what people can decide how they like. Mr. Morosky?
Mr. Craig.
Uh, Mr. Craig. Thank you.
All right. And I'll be, I'll be pretty brief. I just think with regard to some of the topics that we were just talking about, I think it may be helpful to think about whether or not those things are stuff that actually is of some, some level of substance as a board decision-making process, that whether it actually still is a board thing, or whether it's just something that's reported back to the board. And so if that's the case, I don't know that Cal is a bad place to just report on those things, rather than if there's an actual board decision-making process to it, or board action items. And so I think that may be the only thing I would say is on the things that are reporting as opposed to an action item, potential action item thing, that those are fine for Cal, and I don't really see anything wrong with that there. Because I think that is part of what the Committee of the Whole is also about, is about reporting back information for the entire board.
I did not mean to cut you off. Were you finished?
Yeah.
You're good? Thank you, Mr. Craig. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you so much. Yeah, so Ms. Bolton covered some of this, and where a lot of this came from, and you'll see this with a few of the other policies we've already seen in our last board meeting. A lot of the policies we're looking at require all of our input, this obviously being one of them. So this is a great first start, I think, and then, you know, Mr. Hoying and Ms. Scott will get, you know, all of this stuff back to us, and then we can bring recommendations to you. I don't, I don't ever, I'm not dumb enough to speak for the whole committee, but we weren't comfortable making these kind of decisions, just us three. So this is a good start. I'll just want to throw out there, and I hadn't even really thought of this until Dr. Moffett brought it up, about the three, five, six, and seven. I agree that it seems, they seem a little out of place maybe in Student Achievement, no matter what you want to call it or dress it up. I am not in favor of adding a committee necessarily. And the reason is because I do think some of these things appear in Policy Committee already in some way. A few of these also, quite frankly, are executive session items, to be honest. And the other ones, I think, can just like be reports. Like, I don't need to debate the hiring process or retention, you know, I don't need to sit up here really, just me, I speak for myself. I'm not saying other people might want to do that. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out. But I do appreciate, first of all, the General Counsel's staff for going through this, moving stuff around, and then, you know, we're going to have to bring it back again when Health and Safety sunsets as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Mrs. Weinberg?
And the lead way into Health and Safety. Thank you so much. So I'm going to actually take some time to look back through this, so thank you so much, Dan, for providing this for us. But in terms of Health and Safety, I know at our last meeting, the committee, all three members recommended keeping Health and Safety as a committee for the future. So you all will be receiving our minutes at the next board meeting to be, to obviously approve that as well. I just wanted to bring that up since it was similar in this topic.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Is there anybody who has not gone who would like to go? I have not, not gone. Have you gone already? Or you were?
I've gone, but I'm following up on Ms. Weinberg's comment.
That's fine, yeah.
The recommendation. We, it is a recommendation, I believe the minute should be on Monday before it is, okay? So it'll be reviewed by the board?
That's all the same. Mm-hmm. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Vice President Jones. I'll just share a quick comment before we, before we adjourn. I think there may be, whatever, I'm very interested in process on this, and whatever process we use with the Policy Committee, my hope is the timeline could be long enough that if there are items that come out of the strategic planning process that would want to influence our committee structure, that there's a way for us to do that, so that we're not having to do this all over again in six to nine months. And that might be that there's a part A and a part B, or that we leave some space in the bylaws for items related to a strategic plan, but just to be thoughtful about the multiple things that are happening at once, and to thank both the Policy Committee and Counsel's Office for their hard work on this. So before we adjourn, I just want to make sure, for item three, which we did not get to today, that will be something that is discussed in Health and Safety, and it will be something that if people want to engage on at our next Committee of the Whole, we could also have time to talk about that at our next Committee of the Whole meeting. People are good? Excellent. Have a wonderful evening, and I declare our meeting adjourned.